Starting any later. Thanks Joyce. So we will call this special meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order at 7:04. The sole item on the agenda is food trucks and peddler permits. So really, the reason why we're here is to hear from the public so that we can get to the point where the board, we're not saying whether we want food trucks or not, but it's really to, you know, see the temperature of the community to move forward, language for an ordinance. So Ed, did you want to say anything before we sort of open up for conversation? I have a letter that I'm going to read from John Casey, but I just wanted to see if you.
I'm good.
Okay. So we received a letter from John Casey today that I will read. Dear First Selectmen Spac, I'm writing to express my opinion about the food truck issue in town. I would appreciate your reading this letter into the minutes of the October 2021 Selectmen's meeting. I've been a close observer of and a full-time participant in the Kent economy for 15 years. Current economic conditions in town are the best I've seen during that period by a wide margin. Nonetheless, my overall perception is that the Kent economy, based on 3,000 full-time residents, is fragile. At present, there are 17 food establishments in town. The last thing we need is food trucks. The merchants, property owners, Kent Chamber of Commerce, and Kent Planning and Zoning all work together to maintain an atmosphere that represents Kent in its best light. We pay taxes that support the town's infrastructure, abide by a myriad of regulations intended to protect the town's ambiance and support our charitable organizations. We, the local merchants, invest time, advertising dollars, and creative thought year-round to give our visitors and local patrons the best possible experience when they come to the village. The idea of allowing food trucks to come in and capitalize on local businesses' investment of time and money seems like a slap in the face to those of us who have invested so much for so long. Allowing food trucks to exploit the environment that Kent merchants have created, invested in, and maintained is wrong. From a practical standpoint, are food trucks expected to open up on our streets in the raw days of February and March, when most of our restaurants are clinging to their fingernails? Or will they just get to come to town on the busy days of fall and summer, when the food businesses are finally in a position to turn red ink into black and compete with them? Our existing food businesses are required by our zoning regulations to provide parking and bathrooms for their customers. As one who has worked within these regulations many times, the zoning regulations are stringent and do not come without costs, and rightly so. There is precious little parking on Route 7 and Route 341 in the center of the village during summer and fall. Won't food trucks compete with our full-time food businesses for the village's limited parking? How about bathrooms? If providing parking and bathrooms for patrons of our resident food businesses is important, and it is according to the zoning regulations, isn't it important for patrons of food trucks? Or will food trucks get a pass on them? And I can't think about parking on Main Street without thinking about pedestrian safety. U.S. Route 7 is an extremely narrow roadway with unusually narrow shoulders and narrow sidewalks. Most of us who live here have had the experience of someone flinging open a car door on Main Street without looking. It is patently unsafe for food trucks and their patrons. And who will pick up the garbage on Main Street and where would the receptacles be placed? We've all heard the argument that food trucks will bring more people to Kent. How many per day? Fifty? A hundred? By this logic, why not bring in a Dunkin' Donuts and a Subway? Those businesses will bring in 10 times as many people. It will also change the character of the town that P&amp;Z, townspeople, and our merchants are trying so diligently to protect. If we discourage big-box stores and national chains from coming to town, why wouldn't we do the same with food trucks? Food trucks bring no benefit to the town, use our infrastructure, but don't contribute to it, exploit the contributions of our existing businesses and compete with them, and require abrogation of nearly all of Planning and Zoning's restaurant-related regulations, regulations that every other brick-and-mortar food service is required to live by. For these many reasons, food trucks are not a good fit for our town. Please don't allow this to happen. Thank you. Sincerely, John Casey, General Manager, Kent Green. See, we have a few other folks. Welcome, Chris. So that was a letter that John Casey hand-delivered to the office this afternoon for reading.
Yeah, I read it. Thank you.
So I'd like to open it up. Alyssa, do you want to start us off in our conversation?
Sure. I mean, I think John totally hit the nail on the head with all the reasons that I believe in as well. And, you know, I mean, when I left you at the last meeting, what is everyone's fascination with food trucks? And someone said because of price or fast forward. I mean, the town has worked so hard to maintain a, you know, a charm and a character to it. And I think by allowing the food trucks in, that, you know, it's going to detract from everything everybody's worked diligently so hard for for years. You know, it's not the competition, believe me, really not the competition. But if someone can't find a place to eat in Kent, they need to stay home and eat a peanut butter and jelly sandwich, because there is every possible price range in Kent right now. And to think we need to compete with New Milford or Canaan or Torrington, go there for the food trucks. I mean, if you think that's important to your diet, by all means. But food trucks aren't going to be a bargain. I mean, it's not like they're going to be offering $4 food or something like that. I mean, you know, I mean, obviously, it depends what they're selling, but they are going to have a price point too. And I just think, you know, you know, everybody says that they're going to spill over into the stores. Well, you know, I don't, I mean, I just don't see it being that significant a number as a steady diet. And, you know, the other thing is where are they going to park? And like I said initially, I have no problem if it's for a special event or a private party. I have no problem. If the fire department is doing a fundraiser on a Saturday and wants to bring in 10 food trucks to make this, you know, make it a fun afternoon, by all means, go for it. But as a steady diet, I am absolutely opposed to it. So that's kind of me.
Thanks, Alyssa. Tim, did you want to chime in? I just want to make sure. Sure.
Yep. Yeah, thanks for hearing me. Several things I just want to say. First of all, I spoke to several of the restaurateurs and food people in town over the last several days regarding this. And obviously, Tuesday evening, here we are, we're not allowing them to be, I mean, some of them can't speak because they're working. I mean, you know, that's as simple as that. So I think we've got to recognize that just because they're not on this call, it doesn't mean to say that they're not interested. And we, you know, we should acknowledge that. We've got one Main Street and we've got 341. I mean, it is probably, it is state highway. You know, if they don't go there, where are they going to go? I'm not necessarily opposed to the idea of the private aspect of having people have them on their own property, you know, we can't stop that if they want to do that and have, you know, for whatever reason, and that could include John Casey, if he wants to have a private food truck on his property, because it's private property. Or it can be Kent Barnes, you know, I mean, if I want to do one for a gallery opening and want to pay for the permit or whatever, then so be it. But, you know, having, I think the reason why I wanted to speak tonight was also having been, you know, President of the Chamber for six years, we can all go back to the diligence that we did at the time regarding the Gilmore Goals and how we advocated absolutely explicitly that we didn't want to see, do the mistake that the, that the, the town of Washington did the year prior. And that was to have like 10 or 15 trucks in town in Washington. When they came to us, you know, we're not just talking about now, we're talking about what we did back then to say, okay, if there is going to be food tents, if there is going to be food trucks, it's going to be the people who have the businesses in town that can supply that. And then the second in line, if you remember, were the nonprofits in town. The, you know, the Lions Club, and, you know, all those kind of people who could, who could profit or benefit from that, which would then also benefit the town. And the last thing I wanted to say was, well, two things. One, you know, that they're not paying the taxes that the restaurateurs are paying and the building, on the buildings and so on. And then also, even though there may be 17 food establishments in this town, as John Casey quite rightly pointed out, we're talking exponentially on that premise about all the employees who are also employed by those people. And we don't want that business to go away. We've, we've seen on a regular basis, these businesses that try and make it, you know, be, you know, the caterer who was in town before Sophie's, or Namu, or, you know, Roja. So all that is, you know, that needs to be considered as well. So anyway, that's it. Thank you for allowing me to talk.
Thanks, Tim. Chris, did you want to jump in? I, before you got here, I wanted to make sure I gave both of you the opportunity to say, you know, to speak if you wanted to.
I think tonight's forum, the idea, at least that, that I was under the impression is we were going to get feedback from people, positive, negative, or neutral, and I think that that's what we want to hear. I will point out that what, what, to speaking to Alyssa's question, what prompted all this was two things. One, an entity in town provided a food truck on private property to distribute food at no cost, except to the entity that did it to the fire department, I believe during the early stages, was it the pandemic or whenever? So.
Summer. It was actually during Storm Isaias.
Thank you. At which point, there were people up in arms and therefore zoning came down and shut them down, because according to zoning, they regulated it. Zoning at this point, and let's be clear, has, I'm sorry, am I wrong, Donna? That's not how it went down?
No, Torrington area helped shut down that truck. No, I did not.
Okay. All right. Well, so I stand corrected. I apologize on that. But the, the reality is that I don't know why they shut it down. Maybe they didn't, maybe the food truck wasn't compliant or such. But the result of it was that Planning and Zoning, and I think this is accurate, Donna, abdicated, if you will, and that's a strong word, but basically said, we don't regulate this. You're seeing many towns around here now dealing with it. Quite honestly, I don't even see the threat of any truck coming here. I haven't seen one ever try to come here. I don't know if I've ever had any peddlers or under the peddler's license that have tried to come here, but, you know, so I just want everyone to understand how this grew and how this came about. And in doing the due diligence, as Tim did, you know, I walked around to restaurants as well, and I asked them very clear, asked, you know, very specifically, you know, is this a concern? Is, and it ranged from no to yes, yes, just from a business threat. But then there were also components, like John Casey pointed out, of, you know, concern about traffic and safety. So that's how this all evolved. I don't know if anyone can tell me that in our experience, Gene or anyone else at Town Hall, Donna, have, have we seen a request for, for food trucks come in?
Yep.
And, and then, so can you elaborate? Because it just helps us, it helps me understand what the, you know, what the makeup is of somebody who's, who wants to do this. Are they taking specific days like sidewalk sale days? Because I would think that, I'm just guessing here, but I would think that a, anyone with a food truck would need to have at least 50 to 100 people to be able to service to make it profitable.
No, they, they called me before I sent it up to you guys as the Board of Selectmen. I would probably field in, in the early spring, very late winter, three or four calls, maybe over a six-week period. You know, Kent doesn't have food trucks. We want to come in with a food truck. Now, we want to have a food, and it wasn't just that they wanted to come in for an hour, or they wanted to come in for a day. They wanted to come in and set up a food truck on a continually, on a continuous basis. And it was always something that our regulations are written to handle the things that we approve. If it's not listed, then it's not approved. So the answer was always no. And the taco truck basically was the icing on the cake, where the decision that was made, not by me, but blamed on me anyway, I was involved in the process and got no support from anybody and said, you know what? I talked to my commission and said, I'm not take, I'm not doing this anymore. I'm just not. It's going up to the Board of Selectmen, and just like every other town that works it, they work it through an ordinance. You know, Milford does, Sharon's doing it now, Cornwall is looking at it. And that's the way they do it. So that was why it was moved upstairs.
The thing is that all those other towns that you mentioned really don't have any real, you know, they don't have any number of restaurants there. So in certain places, that would be, I guess, a viable option for them to get food in their town. If they don't have spaces for places to open up restaurants and stuff. But here, you know, you have 17 of us with 3,000 full-time residents. And, you know, in the wintertime, it gets really thin and really tricky. And I know, you know, as Tim said, when we, I was President of the Chamber too, for three years. And, you know, we were absolutely adamant when people, vendor, outside vendors wanted to come in and set up, you know, a craft fair or a truck or something like that, and we always turned them away because we, and we chased them away. You know, because we said, no, this is for the merchants, for them to make some money, you know, after, at long last. So that's how we really felt about it. So, I don't know, I mean, I would just hate to see the charm of the, I mean, everybody gets pissed off about the motorcycles. If you've got food trucks junking up Route 7, it's going to, you know, it's going to look like a three-ring circus. And that's not what people want in town. That's, you know, you've got all these people who've just moved here because it's charming and lovely and delightful, and it's, all the stores do their own thing and don't compete with each other. And now, you know, you're putting all this stuff out on Route 7 or wherever it goes. And I just think it would just detract from all the other things that are so positive about Kent. You know, and like, you know, like John said in his letter, we all pay taxes. You know, we have to adhere to zoning rules and regulations. We have to provide bathrooms. You know, and these guys are not going to have to do that. You know, I mean, I've got 17 people on my payroll who, who, you know, I need to make sure they make a living every week. You know, and, you know, every time another restaurant comes in, you know, it thins out a little bit, the dust settles. But I just think having a food truck is just, I don't know, I just don't think that's the way to go for Kent. It, it just will take away from all the charm of it. And that's why people are here.
Can I comment?
Absolutely.
Thanks. I, I, I wasn't the president for six years or even three, just one lousy year as President of the Chamber.
That's good. That's fine.
That's plenty. We did do a survey of our membership. We have, I'm making this number up, but somewhere around 132 members, many of whom are restaurateurs, but all, all types. And we put a survey out asking for a lot of different types of information. One of the questions was about food trucks. And we got a rip-roaring response from the chamber, 60 people, which, which for us is really good. And it was, I would say, a solid 75% were interested in food trucks being around in town. But most of them wanted them to be regulated and wanted them to be limited. There was support for private property only. There was support for food trucks that were prepaid. So for example, if the library wanted to have a food truck or an ice cream vendor, we would pay that ice cream vendor ourselves and then give away the food. It would be a sort of a special event. So it, the vast majority of the, of the respondents, not necessarily everybody in the chamber, but those who took the time to respond, were definitely leaning in support of Alyssa's points and even John Casey's points that, you know, it's, it's not necessarily something that we want to big free-for-all. But I agree with Donna that this is something that should be an ordinance and it should be clear. We don't have a lot of public property in town. There's very little public property. Most of it's private property. We certainly don't want somebody up on Route 7 or on 341. It's treacherous. So if, if we have an ordinance that says we have a limited number of permits, we have, and they have to apply, that they are allowed on private property. Maybe, maybe that's a whole separate application process. I don't know. But if the town is going to issue permits for town property, that's, that's its own thing. And that's very different than them being issued for private property. So anyway, that was where, that was the temperature of the Chamber of Commerce respondents.
That's great, Sarah. Thanks for sharing that with us. So it's a, it's definitely a complex.
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
Um, there is a small town in Connecticut that just started working on banning ice cream trucks for the safety of children on public and state highways with speed limit restrictions. So I, I don't know the name of the town. I've got it in my paperwork. Maybe we could look into an ordinance that says no food trucks on state property with speed limits 30 miles an hour above, and no food trucks on town public highways with speed limits of 20 or miles an hour or above. And that's what they're pursuing, this town is pursuing with ice cream trucks. Because I guess a lot of residents brought it up with their narrow roads. They were worried about children running in and out of traffic and getting hit and run over. So we could also maybe work with that, and that would take care of your food truck problem on Route 7 and on town roads.
Rick, do you know offhand what the number of town, what number of town roads that have like 20 mile an hour speed limits on them?
Not offhand, but if you're just talking about in the center of town, the two state roads are 30 and 35. Elizabeth Street on one part of it's 20 and the other part's 15. I don't know where else I would try and set up.
Right. And that's sort of part of the uniqueness of Kent, I think. The, on the one side, it's Route 7, state road, a lot of pedestrian safety issues. And then the rest of the roads, who would want to put a food truck there? And I do, you know, the argument about the commitment and the long-term, you know, financial, human resource investment that the restaurants make is, is a really compelling argument. Chris, you were, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I'm wondering if, if, I'm loath to take it out of zoning's hands, even though I know it's been a challenge for zoning. I think personally, if you look at it, we should definitely say that there is no vending. So they're a vendor, right? They're, they're a commercial entity. They should not be, they should not be in anywhere but the commercial zone.
So.
Unless it's a private, let's back it up. I think we can all agree that if somebody wants to have up on Skiff Mountain a food truck on their property and have a wedding or a pizza party, whatever the heck it is, they're allowed to do that. I would, I would think, however, that, and Donna, correct me, doesn't that go through zoning anyway for a special event? She's still here? Yeah.
Oh, she might have.
No, she's here. Is that a special event? If I'm going to have a wedding, let's say in my backyard, and I want to have a, the trucks, food trucks, would that be considered a special event?
No, because you're not selling the food to the people that are there, and the people that are there are, they're supposed to be relatives. Otherwise, you become a commercial establishment in the rural district. So let's like, like Bruce Adams, he had the wedding for Sarah at his house. He could have had a food truck, and I wouldn't have really cared.
Okay, so if we can just, if we can just say, I'll agree, I think that that makes sense, right? Okay, somebody can, so what we're really, I think, talking about is a commercial adventure in our commercial zone. And this is why I would like to see it still regulated by those who have the authority, specifically zoning, of what, what is conducted in certain zones. So that said, if I'm going to make it up, Bain Real Estate decides they want to put a food truck in the backyard and, and let them vend on that property, to me, I would think it makes sense that zoning actually has to say, wait a minute, Chris, your property is not zoned for food. Your property is zoned for an office. Because if you want to zone it for food, you need to go and get more parking, better bathroom, or, you know, whatever those, the list is. However, if Alyssa down the street wants to put in a, as an adjunct, and believe me, I've seen restaurants and places, there's one over on Route 22 that actually is an ice cream store and a food truck, perfectly legal in my mind, again, thinking logically that zoning would have to make sure that A, Alyssa had the restaurant rights under all of the guidelines, had the proper parking, had the proper bathrooms, and all of those components. Because to me, it's private property, but it also is private property that is a specific zone, and we have regulations for that. The last thing is on Route 7, if somebody wants to come and vend on Route 7. And I think that's the, to me, the, the one we have to look at and say, okay, well, if they're going to do that, are they, are they a health problem? Are they a road, a traffic problem? And I certainly see that argument, that those, they pose a challenge, aside from risk, aside from our job as selectmen to protect, you know, stores and commerce, which I don't believe that's our role. Our job, however, is to make sure that town is safe traffic-wise and pedestrian-wise.
With safety.
I candidly see, you know, I remember when I was a kid and I was going to an ice cream truck, you're, you're thinking ice cream, you're not thinking cars. And, and on Route 7, I think that that would be a significant challenge. But I don't know, I think I would not want to see zoning not be able to enforce their regulations, their property right regulations in town. And, but you have to conform. You can't be non-conforming and, you know, and have somebody sell stuff off your property to bring people back, if you will, or, you know, as a merchant.
So there is, there is some.
Sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, there is some sense to the way that you're sort of laying it out. Is, Donna, do you think that the commission would be, would have an appetite to have that conversation again, as far as how Chris laid it out? I, I don't know. I wouldn't, I don't answer for them. You know, if you want to change the regulation in order to put the food truck in there, you'll, somebody either has to make that proposal, or they have to come to the commission and ask the commission if they would take it on. Because I think it means that we're going to need to change the regulations to include food trucks, to, you know, to talk about, you know, okay, you might not need the parking, but you might need the seating. And if you don't need the seating, then maybe you need the parking. So, you know, that's all going to need to be configured into a whole new category of use with regard to location, setbacks, garbage removal, parking, seating, hours of operation, you know, that kind of stuff. So, you know, it's not just, okay, yeah, we're going to take it. It's, it comes with its own baggage. So.
Right, I think.
It would be up to them to decide that, not me.
The logic is simply, in my mind, is that it is a use issue of how one uses the private property in the commercial district. It's a use issue, and what you, and you guys regulate everything in terms of use. So to me, it makes sense that that is a way to control it. The other way is to then say, if we, if, if the sentiment is there or the feeling is there, that there's no vending on Route 7. Now, I don't know if that is precluded by state law as to what people can do on this, on the thing. But I think that downtown, where we can control it, you know, that, that's, that's health, that's really public safety is what we're after there. really public safety is what we're after there.
I have a question. Do you think all of this effort is worth whatever the guy, a hundred dollar permit fee is worth this? You know, all this work that goes along with it? I mean, what, what are they gonna pay for a permit? And are they gonna pay it every week that they're here or do they get an annual
Well, again, it's, it, you have to, in my, my way of thinking, your property has to conform. So what happens is now you're putting the property owner front and center. So if somebody wants to come and sell tacos and they come to me and Bain Real Estate and they say want to do it, they go, they go to the, to the selectman's office or wherever they get the permit and say they want to do that and the selectman says, fine, you have to make sure that the property you're on conforms to zoning. They have to go to zoning to get a check off. Zoning says, sorry, it doesn't conform. They don't get a permit. That's simple.
So Chris, let me ask you a question. If you were going to, based on what you've said, let, let's just use the example of Kent Barnes because that's basically where Brett was thinking it started to something, right? So let's just say that Ann Bass's daughter, whoever owns that property right now, chooses to leave, sell it to somebody and that guy is like all about bringing in food trucks. And then all of a sudden you've got a sea of food trucks on Kent Barnes' property which go, which smacks in the face of all those restaurateurs in town, albeit the fact that it's private. So in other words, does that not? That doesn't bode well on the premise of what you're saying because you're putting it, even though he's into the hands of zoning, to a point zoning would have no argument on the premise that there's restaurants back there.
Um, well, somewhat that, but but if, let's, I'll give you an example. If artifacts building, if those who owned that building said, we want to make a restaurant there, right? They would have to go to zoning and get that change of use. That building is, what, five thousand square feet, six thousand square feet? They would then be required to have like four hundred more parking spaces. I'm making it up, but they would have a lot more parking spaces required. So where, where I'm going is if you go and bring a food truck or five food trucks in, you will not, you will exceed the parking requirement by zoning and zoning will say, no. Now, if they bring one in and it works, fine, but again, it has to conform to that. And to me, I'm just looking at use. There's no reason why somebody who has an office should be able to vend on their property, uh, and any food when they're not allowed to do that, when they haven't gone through the process and the permitting situation for that. Again, I'm just, I just thought of this as more of a land use issue when you're talking about trucks, even though I totally get where and why and how Donna doesn't want to have to regulate these. It makes total sense to me, but I, I wouldn't want to just necessarily give it up from zoning because anything that's private property is zoned and is regulated. So whatever activity happens on it can certainly be regulated. The only thing in this whole concept is how do you, how do you control and monitor and and work with anything on Route seven? Um, I, I don't think it's appropriate to have a food truck on Elizabeth Street. It's in, it's a residential zone.
Donna, you look like you were gonna say something a couple times. I just wanted to.
Yeah, no, I we wouldn't be able to regulate anything on Route seven because it's a state road and I don't have any jurisdiction over that.
You can't.
Um, and so, you know, if you're looking at seven and you're looking at three forty-one, um, if you wanted to be able to allow it, they would they would need or be required to get approval from the state before they could even set up. So, um, you know, I mean, I, I think that's, you know, that's a no-brainer, but you know, I mean, if, if the, if the zoning commission wants to do it, you know, we would just need to find a way to rewrite the regulations. But at, when, when this first open, uh, happened, um, they did not want to take it on. So, you know, it's up to them.
Well, again, I just see the logic of, 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 of land use. That's, 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 that's how I see it. That's anything that's on private property.
Yeah, but usually land use is something that's permanent and not temporary. You know, so these food trucks are temporary.
Um, no, land use is not just that. You've done temporary stuff before, special events and things like that.
Okay.
Anyway, it's just, it's a thought. I'm, I'm not to me, I just saw the, the logical line of, of, of use and, uh, property. And, uh, you know, you want to make an ordinance that says no vending of anything on Route seven or three forty-one? Well, that's easy to do. That's pretty straightforward. You don't go, Sharon's gone through the shenanigans now of having to in their ordinance, say that, uh, property owner has to do certain things and this and that and and have to provide bathrooms and and it's like, who the hell wants to do that? It's crazy. Should make it very clean and clear. You don't want them on Route seven, tell them, no, no vending on Route seven.
Can we do that if it's not under our jurisdiction though?
Well, then why are we having a conversation? Why are we having a conversation then? If, if we can't control what happens on Route seven, why, are we just talking in circles here?
Right. I agree.
Has anyone found out whether DOT allows food trucks on their roads?
Well, they don't allow signs on their roads, so I guess they wouldn't allow food trucks on their roads.
Uh, you're, you're right. You're right. They don't, they don't like a lot of stuff on their roads.
My guess is that it would be a permitting.
Hell, they don't even want sidewalks on their roads.
That's it. So I, I got a feeling they're not, DOT is not gonna cave on this one. Believe me, that's possible to, we all know that.
Right. If anything, it would be there. And I've dug around in the regulations and I haven't found anything as far as getting a, you know, there being a food truck permit for a state highway.
Well, the governor, governor allows, I, I looked it up earlier, the governor allows for um, highway pull-offs, you know, where the truckers pull off. They're, they're allowing vending there, but that's, that's not even commercial there. It's just the side of the highway.
Like down in New Haven off Ninety-five.
Right. So, um, I think that's an important thing to find out and it's simple call the DOT, not a simple that's an oxymoron. He called the DOT or many, many departments in DOT may find the answer.
Yeah. We, I think we can find the unit to call. So I did have a conversation with Randy today because reading the current hawkers and peddlers ordinance, we did have that conversation in the last couple of Florida Selectman meetings of, about, does it fit in the current, um, peddler, hawker and peddler ordinance? And so our conversation was really about the definitions in section one and the salient um, words are goods, wares and merchandise. And I just have to say that it's spelled merchandise with a Z in the ordinance, which is kind of curious, but that, um, Randy said that food does not meet any of those categories. Um, so as it stands right now, so that's, that was sort of the other piece. If somebody drove, came or called right now, could they put a food truck on somewhere? Cobble Road, I don't know. Um, could they come put a food truck with a, a hawkers and peddlers permit? And he said barring a temporary resolution by the board, um, it doesn't meet the criteria, the definition um, in the hawkers or hawker and peddler permit ordinance. So it, it wouldn't be, um, allowable. So that, that does address the right now piece while we're having the discussion.
So to, just to be, if I understood you correctly, Gene, you're saying that council said that the permit that we right now issue for peddlers and hawkers is not one that a food truck could hang a hat on to say, I want a permit. Okay, so just there and then, right now, the, it leaves open. If somebody wants to come up, they don't even need a permit, right? They can just pull up?
I would say I'd, I'd have to go back to Randy, but I would say not because they're, um, they're looking to sell something. And
Yeah, but, but, I mean, there were plenty of people who sell stuff on Route seven. I mean, you know, there was a woman from the farmer's market who asked me and I was clueless. She said, could she sell her salsa on my, on my property? And I'm like, sure, go ahead. And then I'm like, wait a minute, she's doing the same thing at food truck too.
Yeah, I'd have to, I I'd have to dig into that with Randy. And so Donna, the, um, and I see Melissa and, you know, I definitely want to hear from, I see Darlene, um, folks from the nonprofits. Um, if you have a point of view or an opinion, certainly we would love to hear it tonight. Um, Donna, can you just clarify for us the construct for the, the farmer's market? Do you all have, um, does P and Z have a, they have a piece in that, right?
Yes, they're given a temporary site plan approval for the farmer's market. And they have since its inception, I think in two thousand and thirteen. Um, the first one was actually up here on Billy Morrison's property. And then when he started the construction, that was when they moved down to, uh, Suzie Williams's property. But every year they come in and they get a site plan, a temporary permit for site plan approval showing how many tents or vendors are gonna be set up and what your parking, um, structure is.
And they are every week for the, for the whole time?
They're every Friday afternoon from three until six, I believe, until October thirtieth or twenty-ninth. And that's the permit that they're given. They have to come to us with a, um, a site plan and a site plan application and go in front of the commission for, for approval.
And Donna may ask, what, what role is the property owner have? Do they have to actually come in and make the application?
They can either give the applicant, they can either be the applicant or they can give the applicant an agent permit to appear before the commission, um, as a non-owner of the property. And that's what, that, when Suzie was alive, that's what was, what was happening.
I, I have a question and it, it's probably a Donna question. Sorry, Donna.
Um, no, no, you're not.
Kent Falls Brewing, like if they want to have a food truck every week, similar to like Avril Farms or some of the other breweries, they're in a residential, they're under a special permit, like what?
They would need to come in and modify their special permit.
Okay, so it would turn into a zoning
Right.
Right? I'm, I'm just asking. I really, I'm, you're out of my league on this one. It turns into a zoning thing, but it's slightly, uh, unknown.
It's slightly a what?
Unknown, like falls into an unknown because you're gonna have to do a special permit, but then it still might not be allowed or it is, it could be allowed.
It could be allowed based on the commission. They would need to come into the commission and do a modification to their special permit, which would be to change their special permit. When they first started operating, they did not have the ability to have retail sales or to do growers. And then they came in, once they were established and they changed their special permit in order to do that. So if they wanted to have a food truck and sell food as well as to sell their beer, they would have to come to us to get us modification to their special permit to increase their commercial capability on that property.
Okay, so even though it's not, it wouldn't be their food truck, it would be another taco truck, whatever company running this food truck, they could potentially achieve this without having to get this food truck that we, food truck ordinance that we don't actually have right now, right? Am I following this?
So are you asking if the ordinance goes in place, does that mean that the, that they would need, that they could do this? Is that, I don't
No, I'm asking if, without the ordinance, if tomorrow they came to zoning and three mo, three months from now, this got approved through zoning as a special permit, they would be out, so without, regardless of if we have a food truck ordinance, they would already be in there. They would be okay.
If we change our regulations to allow food trucks to be on personal property in the commercial zone and, and a commercial establishment that's operating in the rural district via a special permit wanted to do the same thing, they would need to come in and modify their special permit to increase the commercial, the commercial, um, intensity of their use. The commission could turn them down.
Sure. Okay, so someone like Club Getaway also could do that same process.
No, only because Club Getaway right now is not operating under anything. They're pre-existing non-conforming, which is what we're in the process of trying to do, to come up with an actual definition of who they are and what they do. So I wouldn't use Club Getaway right now, um, as a, uh, as an example.
Understood. Thank you.
Donna, Donna, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
In regards to this and what Chris has been talking about, if, if it goes to the commission, this whole, um, you know, thing we're talking about here, are, are you within, i- is the commission obligated to go on precedent of state regs or can you just start from scratch and just come up with your own? You know, are you, are you swayed in any way or, you know, through precedent or do you have to follow guidelines?
We don't have to follow the, the state statutes give the town the right to start planning and zoning. And then it's up to each individual planning and zoning agency to develop their regulations based on what their town wants.
Okay.
So in some cases, there are certain things that we have to abide by with regard to what's in the state statute. So in addition to checking, um, if someone comes to us for, with a specific use, I would need to check the state statute to see if that supersedes what we can do.
Okay, so the reason why I asked the question for it, does that put you in a, a position like of reluctance to get involved with this because you don't want the state regs to override what the commission feels is proper for this town?
No.
No?
No, it's not that. It's, it's, you know, I mean, it's, it's always been a gray, very, very gray area. And I think it was the straw that broke the camel's back was quite basically the taco truck at the Barnes.
Right, okay.
And, you know, quite honestly and truthfully, and I'm laying it out there, you don't pay me enough to take that abuse. So I told the commission, I'm not doing this anymore. Give it to the selectman like every other town.
Right.
So that's really what generated it. And Chris, an answer to your question, farmer's markets, farmer's market is permitted by site plan approval under section forty-one twenty-three.
So I, I have one more question. Again, back to you, Donna, sorry. Nonprofits, I think you and I have already had this conversation. Nonprofits that own property, we would be fine. We could have food trucks. Correct?
I would need to check the regulations specifically for that. If you're going, if you're a nonprofit and you're having a food truck for a specific, like you want to have a food truck at, at the, um, at the music festivals.
Yep.
I would be okay with that. If, if it was in my ballpark, I would say that would be fine because I know where you're gonna be. I know the sightlines that are there. I know the size of the property. I, I know that there's plenty of parking there. So, so those are the concerns. And that was the reason why I questioned that food truck that was going in the barns. If they had spoken to me more than twenty-four hours before they were gonna do this, I would have made other arrangements for them to operate, but they chose not to because of who they were or are. And so therefore that was, that was what started the whole ball rolling to shut them down. So if we were to do that, we would ha, we, if we were to put in a regulation in our books, we would look to see whether or not we would allow nonprofits to go ahead and do that. As of right now, I'm not sure if they can. I would have to read the regulation to see what a nonprofit could do.
And we're talking about two different things. When we talk nonprofits, we're talking about nonprofits that own property and then nonprofits that are gonna use someone else's property.
Yep.
I, I don't understand why we're even talking about who and what, nonprofits, profit, doesn't matter. It's about use and land. And so you already, Donna, you already just said that the, the there's a site plan required by a property owner for the farmer's market. You also said that they operate from up till October, every Friday. So to me, what the heck is the difference between that and somebody wants to pull a taco truck in my backyard and wants to do it on a temporary basis? Wha, what do you, do you, do you, to me, it falls in the same thing. A site plan should be presented. The property owner should be the one on the line. If it doesn't conform to the property owner's, uh, use, it ain't allowed. Or if it is gonna be allowed by a special permit, the, the property owner has to make those either parking or bathroom access or whatever it is that you guys would be concerned with have to be done. I totally get if you pulled a taco truck in my backyard, it would create a crazy nightmare of people running back and forth. So it makes more sense where there's a big open lot, way down So it makes more sense where there's a big open lot way down with this parking or on a field where people have it. But it seems to me that there is a way to regulate that. And then it's a zoning issue and then you, you, the zoning board have the um the individual flexibility of seeing how that fits into the scope of what you guys want to see. I just see that, you know, I, I see that as much what Tim brought up is gives us the flexibility. And then, again, talking about vending on Route seven or Route three forty-one, the commercial zone. Firstly, anyone who's vending anything commercial should be in the commercial zone unless it's a, you know, special event. And then number two is really finding out whether DOT allows it. And if they do, what kind of authority do we as, as the town and, and the Board of Selectmen have to uh have a say in that? Because I think if we do, again, it's my opinion, the traffic is, is really probably the biggest issue.
Public safety.
It is a public safety issue and it clearly is. I mean, pulling out of any of these driveways, just pulling out with regular cars parked.
On a Saturday.
And people jaywalking on days is, is, is harrowing. So putting, to me, larger impediments in the way via trucks um with more people.
Right, concentrated.
It's not, it's not optimal in terms of safety.
But that's, yeah. Like I said, I don't, it's up to the commission to make that determination. But that use fi- food truck, food vending truck, whatever you guys want to call it, would need to be listed in the regulations. And it's not. And our regulations are written in such a way that we only regulate what is stated and what's not stated, we don't allow. So because food truck is not an approved vendor use, commercial use, we don't regulate it. So that's why the regulations would need to be changed at that point in time. So, yeah, it would be, you know, food vending truck, seasonal food vending truck, however you want to, whatever, whoever wants to call it. And then it would be site plan approval and then they would need to meet all the regulations for a site plan. But because we don't have that now, I can't regulate it. It's, it's not allowed.
But wouldn't it be easier for you to regulate it if you had those, if you had that construct? I think you just, didn't you say that that was, that's what, what put you in a bind with that, with situation over at the Barnes is, there was the
Because it's not listed, it wasn't, it's not allowed. So that's the difference of what needs to be done. But the commission did not want to put food trucks in the regulations. So therefore, in order to do, at least to have some sort of regulation to take care of the safety and welfare of the town, I pushed it upstairs to do via town ordinance like every other town does.
Who writes the planning and zoning regulations? Who's in charge of writing them?
It could be anybody from the outside, a town person, or it could be the commission itself.
Ultimately, the commission writes it. They do have
No.
Ultimately, the commission has the ones who, who craft the, with consultants, craft the, the regulations and then you guys have to approve them, right?
No. You can pay me two hundred and fifty dollars to come in with a proposed regulation that you've hired a land use attorney to write for you. If the commission likes what you wrote, the commission will vote it in. They have to go through the public hearing process.
The commission is the arbiter of all of that. They, they don't, I can't just come in with a high-priced attorney and, and say, this is the ordinance, stick it in. It has to be approved by the zoning commission.
It, it's a public hearing that you have to go through with the ultimate vote of the pub, of, of the commission. But the commission does not necessarily have to write the regulation.
Can they write the regulation? I mean, can, can, can someone just take responsibility for writing this regulation? I don't understand. We just need someone to write the regulation and then they can vote it in and then this will go away?
Well, Sarah, I think it's, it's more than that. It's what Donna's saying, there's some nuance to it, one. And two, it doesn't solve the whole problem because there are issues specifically about vending on Route seven, which zoning may not even have control over.
Right, so there's a couple of components that we need to find out before.
Why do other towns go the ordinance route instead of the regulation route? I mean, that Donna probably knows this already and, and so it, because normally, Sarah, this particular issue is dealt with in an ordinance, not in a zoning reg.
Because typically zoning regulates things that permanently are attached to the ground. That's typically why. They, they typically regulate brick and mortar buildings and uses. They don't regulate something that might be here for two or three months during the peak leafing, peeping season. And then they're gone all of a sudden.
Except for a farmer's market.
I regulate a farmer's market, yeah.
Right.
And you also regulate temporary structures, don't you?
No. You mean like tents and stuff?
If, if somebody's gonna pull a, a, a trailer on their site to build a house, like a construction group.
They have to have a, a, a building permit in order to do that.
Right.
And it's only good for six months.
Mm-hmm, yeah, but it's a temporary.
Tied into the building permit. Yeah, hooked up to the septic system that, because the septic system has to be in first.
Someone explain to me the process of, of an ordinance, of how we would get an ordinance in place, please?
So this is, um, this is a neonatal start of that process. You would want to hear from the public to see if there's an appetite in the public for us to go to our town council and craft um ordinance language. Then it would have to be um discussed among the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen would then move it to go to a town vote at a town meeting or a referendum, I believe.
So wasn't this the meeting that we were soliciting information? I mean, this, this was a public meeting about this exact issue. So isn't this enough to suffice for uh uh getting public comment? Now we can move to consulting the attorney and getting an ordinance so that people can move forward with that?
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is the conversation to do that. I, I'm not, I don't get a strong sense from the people that are here that there's, there's interest in crafting an, an, an ordinance to allow food trucks.
Although a group of citizens can do all of what Sarah just said and bring it forward, similar to how we did the right to farm ordinance and other ordinances in the last four years. So it doesn't have to originate through the selectment.
That's correct.
So the, really the, the issue on the table is, does the, does the board feel that this conversation has headed us in, in the direction of crafting that language with town council or um trying, you know, putting together a joint meeting with the, the P and Z commission to have the, the conversation that Donna said would really need to be up to the commission. Sort of the two pathways I think we're at. There's a couple homework items for me.
I think that's where the direct, that's where the direction we need to go in is with the planning and zoning. Let's see if they're interesting in helping us do the ordinance or if we need to have a group of people write it or if we need to do it ourselves.
I think there's a little confusion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it would be kinda crazy for us to sit down and write an ordinance ourselves if we're gonna all of a sudden then present it to their planning and zoning thoughts and they're gonna rip it apart and say, no, we want this, this and this. So it might be easier to do it as a joint group rather than.
You're either gonna write an ordinance or you're gonna ask the commission to write a regulation. The two of them are completely separate animals. They're not, they're not.
That's the first fork in the road that I'm trying to get to with us.
Well, it's, 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 as I see it, it's, it's, it's bifurcated. There's going to zoning to see if they can fit that in to their system. And if that can happen, it's still zoning will not be able. It, it, it's my impression that zoning will not be able to control what happens on Route seven.
Right.
And that does, that would need, if so decided, a very specific ordinance. But it would be, wouldn't be laced with all this stuff of who does what and how. It would be just a simple, there is no vending on Route seven or Route three forty-one or any, or, you know, any private street or public street um in Kent. And that would be very specific.
But now you guys, the town is exempt from zoning. So if the town has a piece of property that they would like to put a food truck on, I don't regulate that. So, I mean, if, if it, even if a regulation was created in the zoning regs for this and the town decided that they wanted to go ahead and allow a food truck on town property, even if there's a regulation, I still can't regulate that.
Well, that's true, but I think a, uh, anyone who's gonna put a food truck, anyone who's coming for a food truck is looking for profit. So it's either gonna be a special event where somebody pays them a flat fee to give their food away to their family and friends. Or it's going to be somebody who is trying to actually vend in a major area while there are a lot of people, especially during the summer and stuff. So um, I, and that's to me an outlier. If somebody wants to put something on the parking rec piece of property and everyone agrees, that's, that's not gonna be something where people are running down to, you know, down the hills to go and, and, and get a taco.
Donna, is that, is that statutory that of town P and, uh, town planning and zoning commission can't?
It's not statutory. It's, it's in your ordinances. Um nineteen seventy-three, I think, the, uh, the town voted to be exempt from zoning. Um, I, I think it was seventeen twenty-three.
So the town could change that.
Yeah, but there would be no reason to.
Yeah, the town.
No reason to.
I mean, you'd have to go through the whole, the same process as you do for, for an ordinance. You would need to go through and, and rescind that ordinance via a public hearing and um referendum. I, I don't know if it's town, I, yeah, because it usually comes, it's a special meeting. Um, so you can rescind that if you want to. But like right now, you know, anything that you want to do with the transfer station, I don't have, I don't have any say in.
Right, so it creates the exception.
Yeah, so you're, so while you're flashing neon lights that you have in the window there, and I usually regulate, I can't.
Oh, the one in the shed?
Yeah, which I've gotten tons of complaints on, so, just so that you know. Um, anyway.
I, I have a question.
That's for Rick. Glenn, go ahead.
Yeah, so um, so however this goes, uh, if this, whoever writes a, a, a new ordinance uh for this or whatever, um, I, 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 I'm just looking at the, the regulation of hawkers and peddlers. I mean, would someone seek to amend that to add food trucks or are we coming up with an entirely different ordinance?
It would have to be, it would have to be a new ordinance because there's so, there's so much to it couldn't be just adding it to the list of definitions.
Okay.
Based on what we've seen from other towns' ordinances that our town council has crafted.
Okay, so the, so i- i- if someone seeks to do this, this is separate from that. Okay, okay. So at this point, we have a peddler's hawkers license that, that council has said that food trucks do not fall under. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay, so what that means is right now, if a food truck wants to come in, they can actually come in because there's nothing in zoning regulations presently, or at least, uh, and there's nothing that we have from the town perspective that uh disallows that. Right, so I think that, that we, the board should at least protect ourselves at this point and make sure that um uh we right now still keep food trucks in abeyance in terms of whether they come in or not. Does that make sense?
Donna, you were gonna, you were gonna jump in, Donna.
Yeah, no, I mean, they're, they're not under zoning at all because they're not listed, right, okay. I, I'm
They're not allowed.
The way that you made it sound, it made it, you made it sound like it's under the jurisdiction of zoning, but it's not.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to, to, to misc- miscategorize that. What I'm saying is because zoning does not regulate it and it is under the purview of the town and the Board of Selectmen, there is a hole. If somebody wanted to come up tomorrow and sell donuts out of a truck.
No.
They wouldn't, they would not be allowed. I mean, they would be allowed. There's no permitting issue.
No, they don't fit underneath the peddler's and hawkers licenses. What Randy made the determination for the definition.
So if they don't.
They would not be allowed.
Why? Because if you're not, if there's, I don't understand that.
For the same reason, I would think that they're not allowed under the P and Z regulations because they're not um addressed.
Is that what council says?
That would, that would be my, um.
So somebody who comes up and, and decides to sell salsa on my, my front lawn has not gone and gotten a peddler's license, are they permitted or not permitted to do it?
Um, I need to ask Randy. Mostly because of, I am just reading, not for the first time, but it, this to me says that it's an, um, Donna is an, an exclusive or inclusive in your regulations. Do you refer to food, food trucks are?
Existing non-conforming. So it's, it would be a non-conforming use.
So it's excluded.
It's excluded.
It's excluded. So under section two in the hawker and peddler regulation ordinance, it says license required. No person or organization shall engage in act, any activity of a hawker or peddler within the town without first obtaining a peddler license from the first selectman. So it may be that this is inclusive, so that if it's not included, it is allowed, which is
Well, that would be nice to know from Randy if it means that they're excluded.
I will get that answer.
Because if not, then somebody could come in tomorrow. I mean.
Right.
What's the use of your property, Chris, right now?
Office and off, it's a mixed use, office residential.
Right, so that means that if they want to come and sit in front of your place and sell salsa, that's a commercial retail and they can't do it until you change your use.
That is correct. So if you, if that's the case, why can't we do that with, with a food truck?
Because the food trucks are not listed as, as an item with a definition in our regulations now.
So wait a minute, the salsa person is?
Salsa person is not a food truck as far as I'm concerned. If she comes to you with a bunch of, with a cooler, with little tiny containers of salsa, like she's selling at the food market, that to me is a retail establishment selling something that's pre-made in a container like, like they would sell at the IGA. So that to me is retail. That's not a food truck.
How about a lemonade stand that I've allowed?
Right, so.
When a little, when the brownies wanted to sell their lemonades and things like that. So where I'm getting at is you can go down a rabbit hole and chase every, every little thing. If you just say, Chris, your property is mixed residential office, it is not right now zoned for any vending of any food, whether it's in a tub or a little brownie's handing it out or a guy in a taco truck, it ain't allowed.
And I think it's, I think, so the way I'm seeing it now is it's less, it's not the, the the thing that holds the food. AKA.
It's the action of selling food.
Right, you are, it is, they are a, a commercial retail establishment that is selling food. So it, it
Just like a farmer's market and just like a bakery and a delicatessen, which are all identified uses with definitions in our zoning regs. So food trucks are not listed in our regulations or in our definitions, even though I'm sorry?
But one could list it if you so choose.
And that's the whole point.
But that doesn't solve our problem about Route seven and vending because you
No, and that's
You don't regulate that, correct, Donna?
Right.
I don't regulate what?
If some, where you don't have, you don't have control, meaning you, your board,
State highway.
Commission and, and we don't control, I mean Board of Selectmen.
Right.
We have no control if somebody wanted to pull up, uh, uh, unless, unless Randy can tell us about the inclusion factor of the permitting that somebody can pull up on Route seven and bend.
Right.
And so to me, that's, that's And so to me, that's, that's the crux of it.
Right, but that's really about. It being a state highway. That's not in our jurisdiction.
It really, in my opinion, is it's the push me, pull you between DOT creating, you know. Yeah, having their standards of safety and the town of Kent having our own standards of, of safety. We've already seen it in the clash with the sidewalks. Their opinion, we wanna have more crosswalks because we have seen people get hit. And killed on Route seven. Between two sidewalk, uh, crosswalks. They don't wanna see that. So I think we need to clarify. From a safety. Specifically in my mind, a safety perspective, what, what they can allow and will allow.
I think you also have to make sure that Torrenton area health is involved. You know, your friend selling, the girl selling the salsa and the girl with the lemonade. I mean, but. Anytime you get into that thing, you have to make sure it's on a hard surface and all this stuff. I mean. It's, it, there's a lot of, lot of open categories here.
Are we talking semantics here? I mean, uh, uh, all this discussion for what? As Alyssa said before, if we're, if we're doing. A thousand bucks in, you know, uh, uh, over a period of a year, it's, it's certainly not for the money for the town. I mean, uh, uh, are we looking at more of a situation where we just need to do an ordinance which says. No food trucks except for the two that are already grandfathered in, full stop, end of story?
Well, but if you look at the, if you look at the ordinances in these towns, they don't say that. They, they, they say they are allowed, but they have to go through very specific processes and they have to have so many.
Detailed, prescription.
What, what? To me, so to me, it's cleaner to regulate it through zoning. It's cleaner to regulate it through zoning on private property. And then we have to figure out how to deal with it on public property or state property.
State property. So I.
Again, so it's a suggestion.
I think, you know, we've been in an hour, a little over an hour and ten minutes. I think, I know I have a number of homework items. I think we've had a pretty full discussion. I'm very appreciate, um, Donna, you being here and filling in a lot of gaps for me. So, um, just. I think we should have this on the next board of selectmen meeting and. Which is in a week. And we can really come to, I'll have these homework items um, figured out and then. I think that's really gonna be the next step. Of.
Makes sense.
What's the, which, which path are we gonna pursue?
I think you also still have, as you're pursuing this, you have to think of what these food trucks are commit, are contributing to the town.
Right.
You know, try to. Sell, sell food. Do a hit and run, but you know, when it comes time to contributing to the tax base of town. What are they adding? I mean, seriously, I mean, I think that's a big factor. You know, and they don't have to abide by the same rules and regulations that I do. They don't have to deal with A R B. They don't have to provide a bathroom. I mean, I mean, I understand. I'm gonna make a quick sale, but I honestly think for everybody else, you know, if you want, I don't know, it. I know, we can't beat this dead horse into the ground anymore, but I just think, you know, those are things that really also need to be brought up as well as. Is that, are those factors?
Yeah, and I, I very much agree with you, Alyssa. And also, how is it gonna tax our? Our, our town as far as, you know, the public safety factor is a huge factor and also the, the sanitation, the. You know. The, the folks who are the influx of the public that's gonna come for, you know, let's just say. There's four food trucks on Route seven. Um, the influx of crowds of people who. Are gonna be overtaxing the garbage cans and the recycling bins that are on Main Street. We're gonna be overtaxing your, all of your bathrooms and your garbage cans. And they're gonna be, you know, the use of the welcome center is gonna go through the roof. So I think. That's, you know, another bolus of, of. Components that have to be seriously considered.
I just tried to add in, don't forget those motorcycles where it park, if you take away their parking. I don't know.
That'd be a good fight.
Yeah. Anyway, oh, but thank you all. And I'm sure you'll send out a notice for the next one.
Yeah, so very much appreciate everybody's hour and fifteen minutes now that we're in. I have my homework items. Um, Chris and Ed, do you have anything more to add? Otherwise, I think we should respect everybody's time and. Move everybody along with their evening at eight nineteen.
Good, thank you, everybody.
All good, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Adjourning at eight nineteen. Got that, Joyce?